This conference will now be recorded.
... If everyone arrives, we'll have an invitation to pledge allegiance. Dear heavenly Father, thank you for this day. Thank you for the opportunity to tomorrow to celebrate our independence and our democracy and our liberty and our freedoms. And please keep the defenders of our freedoms safe. Your heavenly Father, we love you, we honor you, and keep us all safe. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the mother which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
I have a motion to approve the agenda with the option of taking the minutes approval off.
Okay. I have a motion with a caveat to take the minutes approval off. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? On favor say aye.
Aye.
If no, motion carries. Minutes approval for June the 6th, 2023. We don't need this. Just took it off.
We don't have minutes.
All right. Easy enough. Thought I was paying attention. Public comments, agenda items only. One agenda item. Seeing none, we will close public comments down to our director's report.
Good evening, commission members. I have spoke to the consultants with Storit. They've reached out and received approval to send postcards to residentially owned owner occupied homes. Approximately 1,063 postcards. They should have already started reaching residents requesting input on the proposed plan. The consultants would also like to hold a special planning commission meeting on Monday, July 24th at 6 o'clock to review the process and receive input on the plan from the planning commission. I did hear from a few of you today saying that that date was okay. I think there was one that said they'd be out of town. If we could just have a forum, if you can be there.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep, everybody good?
And after discussions with the town attorney regarding the uses permitted only in the proposed light industrial zoning district, similar to the Myrtle Beach restrictions on businesses, the town attorney stated that this was feasible proposal. And since the courts had ruled it legal in Myrtle Beach, he'd have a similar ordinance that would work here. We will have this and other proposed changes at the next meeting. Please review the uses on each district from the packets given out at the previous meetings and prepare to go through each use and do so at the next meeting. So, if you haven't done that. That's all I have.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Discussion item. David Shore from Diamond Shores LLC requests approval to rezone 8.74 acres from planned unit development to highway commercial on portion of the property running Highway 17 South. So, I will turn it over to David or whoever's going to do that presentation.
I hope just briefly, if it's okay, David, I'll pull it up so you can tell me when you're done. Okay, so the current portion of Wildwater and Wheels requesting rezoning is currently zoned planned development. Prior to rezoning to planned development, the property was in fact zoned highway commercial. The remaining portion of Wildwater and Wheels, which is approximately eight acres, is proposed to remain as amusement planned development at this time. No application has been submitted for rezoning for that portion. The town's current comprehensive plan calls for the future land use for this property to be C1, which is highway commercial. And I'm attached to future land use in your packets. The rezoning request does not, does meet the intent of the future land use map. Amendments to the zoning can be initiated by the town council, planning commission, county administrator, planning director, or his or her designated need, or by the owner of such property of which the amendment is sought. So tonight, we just, we're requesting discussion. And if the planning commission feels inappropriate to, let's tell staff to go ahead and schedule the public hearing for the next meeting, which would be August 1st. This is, the orange shows where they're asking for it to remain as PD. And then the blue portion, which is right on 17, they're proposing highway commercial. Looks like it's split right by the power lines or the power line easement shown in the orange here and the blue. And that's the future land use map.
So, didn't you say it does or does not meet the purpose of the land use map?
The, what they're requesting right now, the C1 does meet the intent of, it's, the future land use map calls for it to be highway commercial.
Right.
And they're requesting it to be highway.
C1.
Yes. Thank you. Have been all turned over.
Thank you very much, David's word, Diamond Shores. Here to represent the advocate tonight. Obviously, we were here several months ago and we heard the crowds, and we heard the planning commission, and we heard the future land use map. The request at that time was that the rezoning needed to really come into compliance with the comprehensive plan and the future land use at that time. So what we've done is we've been working with several commercial developers that have expressed interest in the property. And at this time, we're wishing to rezone the front eight, approximately eight acres to C1 to match the comprehensive plan. Obviously, specific development of that parcel will come at a later date and will come back before the planning staff and commission with specific designs and standards like that. If the rezoning doesn't move forward, nobody obviously can develop it until such time as it's rezoned. So we don't have any final plans or final drawings or even conceptual ones to show you in terms of what that's going to look like at this time. But we are working to put those together. But we did hear you guys last time, you said that it should be comprehensive according to comprehensive plan and should be zone C1. So we went back to the drawing board and took the multifamily component out of the front and said, we're done. And we're bringing back commercial as we've been asked. We don't have anything currently planned for the rear. We're waiting for some development opportunity to come forward. And we'll bring that in and whatever the future land use maps is at that time, obviously is what the planning commission can support. So we don't know what that's going to be. And hopefully you guys during your planning exercises can come up with what that should be back there. I mean, that'll be part of your comprehensive plan exercises. So, but at this time, we don't have any plans to develop anything in the rear. All we have is people that are interested in developing commercial. Which is what the plan says we should do.
Any questions for David?
Excuse me, Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am. Go ahead.
In order to do it that way, that property would have to be subdivided. Are you prepared to submit it and to subdivide it?
Yes, we are, we are going to be, if the rezoning occurs, wherever that boundary line is, that's where we will have to create that parcel line. Currently, we're proposing to run it down the power line in order to subdivide it.
I don't think we can rezone part of a parcel. I think the subdivision would have to come first.
We can't, you can't rezone. Yes, you can.
Part of a parcel?
You sure can't. You can split a parcel.
So it's got to be subdivided first?
No.
No.
You can have the front portion as one zoning and the rear as another zoning. That's not what they're wanting. Yes.
Yeah. And I have done that in multiple occasions on both sides of the table. Typically, what happens in a case like this, when you have a very large parcel and you're only wanting to develop a portion of it, is that you will set what the boundary of that zoning district is, but prior to giving any kind of approvals for it, that subdivision would have to be recorded along those boundary lines. So we wouldn't be creating a new parcel, like a subdivision, after the zoning is done. We would subdivide it once that boundary line is agreed to by, in this case, it'd be town council. So once town council says, this is, we agree with this boundary, that's the line, we will draw the line and survey it out and submit it, or we'll go through staff as a subdivision plan, and it will have to match that boundary line.
Any other questions, David?
Hi, Mr. Chair. Access to the back parcel? Have you guys discussed anything yet?
If they, if they have access to the back parcel, there would have to be multiple points of access. We wouldn't leave it with a single point of access because it would hinder its ability to be developed under town standards. Yeah. So they'll-
There's also cross easements.
Yeah.
There'll be cross easements on the road. Yeah, that's contingent on the contract we have on the front. But there has to be cross easements and maintenance contracts between the parties.
Okay. And for the record, that was Mark Lazarus, one of the proprietors.
Thank you.
Just so it's on the recording.
Thank you.
I know how hard it is to keep that.
Any other questions?
Yeah, Mr. Chair.
Why not submit for the entire property to be C1 at the onset to match the comprehensive?
Because currently, we don't have a plan for the development of the rear. We have nobody interested in developing it. And we figure at this point, we've got to wait for you to finish your comprehensive planning exercises. And whatever you say, if it continues to say C1, that's the district that we'll have to bring in at that point. But to rezone it now, we may end up having to rezone it again if you decide that you want it to be something different at that point. But we can develop it as anything without coming back to the planning commission. So it's not like us withholding, it gives us permission to develop it as something different. Anything other than the amusement and even with, we've developed under the amusement, that would require us to come back to the planning commission. So it's not hiding or pulling anything back. It's, everything will be forthright when it comes to be presented. We have no ability to do any additional development on the rear without bringing it to you. We just are going to wait and see what you guys come out of your comprehensive plan and then seek those that match it.
But also keep in mind, the planning commission does have the authority to initiate a rezoning. So if you feel like the back should be zoned commercial, you have that right to initiate that. And if it's rezoned, then they have to come back, get the comprehensive plan changed.
Mr. Chair. It seems to me that the whole planned development was approved in 1989 for a specific purpose of a water park amusement. But has ceased to function as that. Therefore, it's not in compliance with the planned development zoning. I would prefer for planning commission to initiate a rezoning of the entire parcel, reverting it to C1. Why leave a scrap behind? It's not even in compliance. The scrap we leave behind is not going to be a water park, so it's not in compliance with the BD.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Scott? If you could just clarify for us, you have a plan to develop the front portion yourself or do you have a plan to-
No, we have other, no, other interested parties who are looking at developing that.
To purchase it?
To purchase it and develop it. So they're, their plans, not ours, and we don't have them. They just have that interest in purchasing that property.
And they're currently only interested in the front portion, in the 8.74 acres?
That's right. We don't have the, the commercial interests yet in the rear, so we haven't brought it forward. That doesn't mean there won't be commercial interest in the rear.
So potentially, if we were to pass this, the front portion, you would then be able to sell to a developer? And then you would maintain the property?
The property balance. And at that time, if somebody wanted to contract with us or develop it, we would have to submit a rezoning at that time.
In the back of your mind is, do you have a plan for the, for that back portion currently?
No, I'm not the property owner or the developer. I'm just representing them in terms of, once they do decide to go forward with a contract, I'll be the one that'll be hopefully representing them through the planning commission process and the design side.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying.
Any other question? I agree with the fact that, well, let me ask you one question. Sandy Lane that runs just past 8th Avenue South extension, would that be, for lack of a better word, reopened for exit purposes from the commercial development versus it all going out 17?
As far as access to the rear on Sandy Lane, I haven't-
Yeah, versus going out Sandy Lane or going down-
I think a lot of that will come under purview when it comes back for developments middle. You'll have that ability to talk about-
I was just wondering if you guys have thought about it. So I went down there today and there was a gate. And I understand why the gate's there, but way back in 2001, we closed that part. And it just made sense to me, if you're going to exit out of these commercial buildings, that would just be a better, as good an access point.
That will, that will be open. What's, and it's closed for obvious reasons. I've got people breaking in there every day now, breaking windows and everything else.
Yeah.
But that's-
It's happening.
I'm sorry. But yeah, I mean, once the commercial development takes place, they're going to have to have access. So they'll have two points of ingress and egress.
Right.
One being Sandy Lane and one being off of the frontage road coming in too.
Right.
So that's, that will be wide. I mean, that'll be open all the time, then it won't be closed off.
Yeah. Okay. I just want to make sure.
And I just wanted to read, like I said, you will have that opportunity when it comes to design.
Yeah.
And it comes back in to adjust where those access points are, how you see fit at that time.
I guess I got to answer the same question. I'll ask it differently. You're talking about subdividing this parcel. And when it was originally submitted, 15 acres, it was all submitted as amusement. And I think as you said, your words, you heard what we were talking about and what public said back in December. So I'm wondering why, why we just don't do it all C1 to begin with? You know there's not a chance for residential.
And like I said, I'd be, at this point, I don't, I don't know-
And I just don't see the amusement opportunities either in the back portion.
Yeah.
So it seems to me it might save us all a little bit of time if we just did it all in one fell swoop.
Yeah. I'll let the attorney represent that real quick.
Members of the commission, my name is George Redman with Bellamy Law Firm in Myrtle Beach. We've been talking with Mr. Boucher. So I think we initiated a conversation with Ms. Adair many months ago. I want to guess four or five months ago with an attorney, myself and another attorney for people who are interested in buying the entire parcel. And that was a contract that was pending when the last zoning was taking place. And this is a significant sized piece of property, very unique in the town, no doubt about it. The carrying costs of a piece of property for a property owner like this can also be significant, especially if it's not currently operating or unable to operate. So we began this conversation with Ms. Adair as to what could be, the property could be used as a whole, parts of it, what it had been historically. And, you know, there's no question, if you look at zoning in the town of Surfside Beach, one block wide from the highway, both directions, it's C1. And we're talking, what we're talking about right here on this portion of property is one block generally from the highway. We're asking that it be C1. And the reason why we are here now with the partial request is because that this is, this is very time sensitive. The carrying costs of this are time sensitive. And we need this to go through or property owner is going to get, it's going to be extremely, create some hardships for the property owner to have an unused piece of property. The obligations for carrying the cost of it have not stopped. And we're here in good faith to present the first portion of it. It doesn't present us with any advantage or disadvantage to say, all right, y'all want the frontage portion to be highway commercial, we agree. If you look at the current zoning for the entire town, you can see it's C1 the whole way, just like, so it would be entirely consistent. And we have a developer or a purchaser who is willing to take a look at it and invest in the town, in improving that portion of property. And what he is going to do with that will be before the town, before it can be approved. Now, as to the back portion, we don't have that opportunity right now. We don't have somebody saying that, okay, you know, if it's C1, we'll, we'll invest in it, we will improve it, we will do X, Y, or Z with it. That just doesn't exist. So the fact that, and there are some important distinctions that we will be talking with, with Ms. Adair and with Mr. Boucher, your new town attorney, distinction and y'all in the planning process as to the back portion of the property. The back portion of the property, historically, a large chunk of it, 3.8 acres, I believe, in 1988, 89, before it was rezoned, it was residential. So historically, it hasn't all been highway commercial. And it, it doesn't lend itself, commercial property, when you're driving down the road is if you see something, that store, restaurant, or anything like that, you're driving, you see it, you pull over. Commercial opportunities in the back where someone doesn't normally go, the opportunity for the uses are distinctly different. And the front block of the property, we agree. The problem was shut down or the, the application before was shut down. It created a significant problem for the property owner. And we're here in good faith to, the question tonight is, do y'all have enough information to schedule this for a vote on August 1st? We've submitted, we didn't submit in June, we submitted May 5th. It's taken this long to get here before you. And we respectfully are just asking for a vote on the front half of the property, what your application is tonight. It's not even a vote, it's just an okay to talk about a vote on August 1st. So that's what we're hoping, we don't get mired down in access, the community concerns, what might actually go in the front, what might actually go in the back. It'd be really easy to get us bogged down there. It's essential for us and we're available to talk in between now and August 1st with any members of the planning commission, community, the town. I know I'll be speaking with Mr. Boucher between now and then. But it is critical that for the purpose of this meeting, we want to just be approved, to be scheduled for a vote on August 1st in a month without, you know, deciding all of these particular issues. So respectfully, we, it's on the agenda just for approval for us to actually ask you in a month from now. And we hope we can just get to that point in a month, just to ask you, present for a vote at that time. So yeah, there are a lot of issues. It's a very unique portion of property. It is a huge, it's becoming, as time drags on, it's becoming more and more of an issue financially and legally for everybody involved. And so we just hope, we can just maintain the, keep an eye on the ball that August 1st, we'd like to be able to present this to y'all and ask y'all to take a vote on it so that it can potentially be in front of the town council at, you know, in August at their hearing. So yes, we agree that the back portion, the development of the front, the back, the access, all of those are absolutely need to be visited and discussed. But for the purpose of this meeting is, you know, can we just get to August 1st with our plan and ask for a vote at that time?
Well, yeah, let me clarify, August 1st is not necessarily a vote. We're here to, it would be a public hearing scheduled on August 1st.
Correct.
If we have enough information. So it's not necessarily a vote. We will then listen to the public's input on it if we say we have enough information. So, just to clarify that.
Can we talk to the property owner just for a minute about this? Cause it sounds like he's- Sure. He might be- May I ask, if we were to revise it to, through our petition or through our application or through the town suggesting or moving to include it all as C1, would that, would that still allow us to be, present on August 1st and have a community meeting and go for a vote at that time if we move it all to C1?
Well, I mean, that's, that's, it's going to be left up to this commission as far as a motion and a second. So what you're telling me is you will resubmit this plan including all 15 acres?
The one problem we have is delay.
Okay, I've been delayed so long. I'm telling y'all. I mean, let me tell you all something, this is, this is, this has really gotten tough. I mean, you know, I read all the stuff that people writing about me and my family and what we've done. We hadn't done anything but give to this town for 32 years. In 2017, I made a tough decision and said, I need to spend more money and put new slides in, just like one of the bloggers said. And we did that in excess of a million dollars. And then I came back and added the other slides two years ago to continue to try to upgrade that facility and try as hard as we can to bring more people in there. Golly, it just hadn't worked. I'm sorry. And I'm not going to go into our personal endeavors and what we've done. I should have shut that place down 10 years ago or more, quite honestly. But I kept trying and trying to make it work. And it just hasn't worked. I'm sorry. It's, a lot of it's been the economy, a lot of it's been, you know, schools starting back earlier, you know, it's, it's the traffic. You've got campgrounds that have built, their own water parks that have, they were a big driver of ours. And it's just been one thing or another. There's not a lot of hotels in Surfside Beach. So, you know, you don't have that extra drawl of people here. I mean, I could go on and on. We've given our heart and soul, y'all. I'm telling y'all, blood, sweat, and tears. And I've given to this town, our family has, for 32 years. And some of the things I've been called and said about, that's not right. I was able to purchase the property from, from the landowner, 11.9 acres of it. And that's the only reason I'm able to stand here and get out of the trap, quite honestly, from that part, because it was under a lease. But I now own, we own 11.9 acres. And we're trying to make a good business decision, trying to bring some income into the town. I'm not here to put apartments in. Y'all, y'all told us you didn't want it. So I have no problem. And I, I mean, I'm saving the back part because I want to make sure I have an ability to put something back there that makes sense and to be able to sell. I'm just checking your zoning in C1, if I could put trade shops back there, if I could put other types of commercial entities, which is allowed in the C1 zoning. And that's fine. I have no problem being able to do that in the future. So I'm, I'm stepping back. And, you know, we lost a big contract that could have really been good, and that's fine. I understand. I, I heard the town loud and clear. Y'all made a, a big decision when you took a single family and multifamily out of your C1 zoning and you did it on the west side. Our zoning, ladies and gentlemen, is a little bit different too. It's in a pud. It's not straight zoning and it hasn't been. And yes, ma'am, it was zoned as a single use. We have a little different take on exactly what's allowed because of the law. But I'm not going to go there either. I'm, I'm not an argumentative kind of guy. I'm just trying to make things happen. So with that being said, not going any deeper, I have no problem taking the entire tract to C1. But I'm asking y'all, for me to do that, to please, let's move this thing forward so I can get a, a hearing and a vote on August the 1st so I can fulfill my contract on the front piece of it with someone that we have that is wants to put something nice and good that will generate revenue into this town and to help, help a piece of property that's abandoned right now. And I can tell you, the demo work starts in a couple of days. The trucks are already there. So it's, it's, it's coming down. The trucks are already there. So it's, it's, it's coming down, and, and we just need to make this happen. So with, working with everybody, as I have, and our family has for 32 years in this town, I just make a plea to you, please, don't delay us anymore. I'll bow to you, C1. But please, work with me too. I mean, it goes both ways, two ways free. Thank y'all very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
I have a question for Sabrina. So in the, in the past few years, have we had any interest in amusement zoning? Because I mean, if we rezoned this, there's no amusement zone that we would have in the town.
We have not, but we also have mixed-use zoning, which we have none at the time.
What is, what is allowed in mixed-use versus?
Small businesses and multi, actually mixed-use, like retail on the bottom, personal, I mean, residential on the top. We tried that a few years ago to rezone. It was, it was shot down by council. It's in our future land use, but I mean, we do have zoning districts in town that we do not have the zoning.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Seth?
I think David opened with a comment around, got multiple potential suitors for the property. But it sounds like there's one that's ready to go.
Yes, I'm, I'm under contract for a portion of it, yes. And it's contingent on rezoning. Yes, for the front.
So you also, and I appreciate you sharing a couple of times, operating in good faith. Thank you. Is there any opportunity, if you use your words, that was nice and good for the community? Are you comfortable or can you share for the community, an idea of what this property would be?
I really don't have a problem doing it. It, the, the potential one that we have right now is, is for a convenience store, gas station, and, and car wash. It's coming, it's going to have to come to you to, to afford anyway. So I, I mean, I have no hidden agenda.
Thank you.
That's what we have right now, and it's, it's, it's first class too. It's, it's, so. But that will come, that same developer is working on some more plans for some other interests that they have that are potentially some restaurants and small things.
Thank you.
Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
I have no problem with scheduling this public hearing to revert the entire property to C1 where it came from. Because I think that's something we ought to be doing in any way, since it is no longer functioning the purpose it was intended for. So even if these gentlemen were not involved, who didn't have, none of this was happening, I think planning commission on its own should be looking at reversion of it all to C1. So that suits me.
Is, is it true that part of the back portion, I'm sorry, excuse me? Mr. Chairman, may I speak? I forgot what I was going to say. The back portion, is it true that part of it was zoned for residential? Is that what you, I, I thought?
The original, when we, when we bought the property, when we, when we developed it, 3.89 acres, which is basically where the retention pond is, all the way back. I'll show you here. This right here was all 3.89 acres. Out of that, it was a little bit more than that because we donated that small piece with the water tank on it to the town. That was able to bring the town a, about a $70,000 grant to bring water across the road, because y'all didn't have water across the street, which helped you develop a lot of that property there. Grand Strand Water and Sewer served, the sewer in the back corner there at the time. And then since then, Grand Strand Water and Sewer has taken it over. At the time, it was zoned residential. And then when we brought it in as a PUD, a PUD has, in state law, has many uses, but it's, the permitting was for a single use, which was for an amusement park.
And it was never developed as residential?
No, it was raw land.
Okay.
And it was actually zoned R1, which is Logan's Key Residential. So single families only.
That's good. That's great. Yeah.
Since then, it's been C1. In 89, yes, well, it's, it's, no SPD, it went from R1 to plan development.
Yeah, if you're reading management, you know, there was a lot of people weren't real happy about that either.
That's true.
None? None? Sorry.
And if I could, the, the difference is if the, the property owner agrees that yes, he'll go, he'll amend his request and say the entire parcel, then we only need 15 days to advertise and notify the public. If the planning commission initiates the back parcel, we have to notify everyone within 30 days. We have to give them at least 30 days notice. So if they agree to amend it, then the planning commission could have the public hearing next month on the entire parcel.
And, and the vote, the same meeting?
You can make the recommendations at that meeting for, for council.
And likewise, Ms. Adair, you could, you could state at this meeting that the, the entire parcel or the future land use plan is just as the frontage convert, converting that to C1, if the entire parcel is converted to C1, that would also comply with the future land use map that the town has right now.
Yes, absolutely.
So it'd be the same opinion as to hold.
Do we need a vote or a consensus on moving into a public hearing on August 1st?
With the condition that, we don't need a vote, but with the condition that the developer will, or the owner will change it to the entire parcel.
Right.
We just need the planning commission to give us the nod that yes, we're the ones who have the public hearing.
And I believe we, we are willing to move forward with that.
I'll go on record, yes.
You got that? Everybody wrote glasses.
I have consensus to that. Yes, sir. Consensus. Okay, good. Thank you, David. We appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Discussion is ending, but public comments? No, we didn't cover everything.
I finally made her by happy.
Motion to adjourn.
No public comments? Okay. Commission comments? Happy 4th of July. I have a motion to adjourn. Second?
Second.
All favor say aye? None, motion carries. You?